I had to watch all of them. Let's just.
Are you breaking that final mark?
You never got to watch. Thank you. Always have to watch.
Don't you get long with it, don't you? I have to. They say you might lose it tonight.
Okay. I'm okay. I mean, I know. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. People would see that.
Don't you get long with it, don't you?
Okay.
I have to. They say you might lose it tonight.
Okay. I'm okay. I mean, I know. Yeah. Three movements. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. People would see that.
Don't you get long with it, don't you?
That's okay.
I have to. They say you might lose it tonight.
Okay. I'm okay. I mean, I know. Yeah. Three movements. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, I'm gonna roll. Yeah. Wow. I think I'm studying. I think I'm reading. It's like brain. Look, didn't know who was. What's happening? I'm like, what? What? I'm like, what? I'm like, what? I just find you on the floor. I'm like, what? Yeah. I'm like, brain. It's like. Look, didn't know who was. What's happening? I'm like, what? 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 I'm like, brain. It's like. Look, didn't know who was. What's happening? I'm like, what? 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 Yeah. You're all right. Yeah. Yes. Yes. Yeah. 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 Lot of hands, a lot of mates. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Are we gonna get going? Well, it looks like.
Yeah. 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 Well, I see. I see. I can't do it. I don't know. Yeah. 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 I didn't do it out of place, man. I'm like, just trying to get out of room. She did for you. Yeah. Right. That's what I'm saying. Yeah. 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 Right. Yeah. All right.
Yeah, I guess we should. I thought maybe the, uh...
Yeah. All right. Thanks. Yeah. Yes. 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 Yes.
Order, please. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order the Monday, January 6, 2020, Morrisville Borough Reorganization Meeting. Item number 1B is we're gonna swear in newly elected council members in alphabetical order. To give you the rundown, that would be an order, Mr. Ted Parker, then Mr. Bob Paul, Mr. Scott Robinson, and then Mrs. Nancy Sherlock. After taking your oath of office, please come take a seat on the dais. So, may I have Ted Parker first, please?
Hi, Mr. Parker. Blue V T S, please. I have to, I have to, to solemnly swear, to solemnly swear and affirm that I will support, and I will report, and I will obey, and defend, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, of this Commonwealth. And I will discharge, and I will discharge the duties of my office, to be in my office with fidelity. Great, lady.
All right. Next would be Mr. Bob Paul.
Do you have your oath? Did, did, is that making sense?
No.
Do you have your oath? You need to sign that.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't know that. I thought they would.
Where's?
Probably there.
You should have it.
I didn't bother you.
He needs his oath. The oath.
I have one. Did he? Dave has one. Dave, you have a joke, right?
I thought you were giving them out.
Yeah, I have one if they need it.
Anybody who needs one, we have them.
I thought you were giving everybody a little.
Have a blank one.
Okay. All right. Here we go. Right. You wanna put your right hand on the Bible? So why don't you come over here, so everybody can see ya. There you go. I state your name.
I, Bob Paul.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Great. Congratulations. All right, next is Mr. Scott Robinson.
What are you doing?
I have to support your blue V T S, please. I have to, I have to, to solemnly swear, to solemnly swear and affirm that I will support, and I will report, and I will defend, and I will defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. Good. You have to sign.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's you. You're official.
Congratulations. All right, next is Mr. Scott Robinson.
What are you doing? I'm not looking at you.
I have to hand, hand it over here.
Ready? I, Scott Robinson.
I, Scott Robinson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. Good. You have to sign.
Congratulations.
That's you. You're official.
Congratulations. All right, next is Mr. Scott Robinson.
What are you doing? Oh, look at you.
Hand, hand it over here.
Ready? I, Scott Robinson.
I, Scott Robinson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, you did, you did sign it.
That's good.
You're good?
All right.
All right?
Just sit down, or sit down.
Yeah, go sit down. Pick a seat.
Pick a seat.
For now.
All right, congratulations, Scott. Next, next up is Mrs. Nancy Sherlock.
Which side does it matter?
Your answer.
No, you stay here. Do you have a Bible?
Yeah.
Need a Bible?
Yes.
Aha.
Thank you. Okay. Say a little bit so the audience can see you. I, Nancy Sherlock.
I, Nancy Sherlock.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do swa, do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, you did, you did sign it.
That's good.
You're good?
All right.
All right?
Just sit down, or sit down.
Yeah, go sit down. Pick a seat.
Pick a seat.
For now.
All right. Congratulations, Scott. Next, next up is Mrs. Nancy Sherlock.
Which side does it matter?
Your answer.
No, you stay here. Do you have a Bible?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I was using the.
Need a Bible?
Yes.
Aha.
Thank you. Okay. Say a little bit so the audience can see you. I, Nancy Sherlock.
I, Nancy Sherlock.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do swa, do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidel, fidelity.
Struggling with my words. Maybe you can sign. Thank you.
Very nice.
I'll just fill out the rest. Put this back.
Congratulations, Nancy.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone has been sworn in. So as we rise before reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, I ask during the moment of silence that we remember former Councilman Mike Fitzpatrick. I will remember Mike as a strong supporter of law enforcement and of our community. Also, please remember Morrisville's longtime resident, Jean Shippos. Mrs. Shippos was the founder of the T L T Foundation and a great advocate for youth programs. Both Mike and Jean were remembered as exceptional public servants who tireless gave of themselves to help others. Please pray for their families as they struggle to move forward during this time ahead with great loss. Please rise.
My pledge allegiance. To declare that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we, we need a roll call. I don't, don't think anyone provided one, so, so I guess what we'll do is go down the line. Eileen Dreisbach.
Here.
Mike Jaeger.
Here.
Ted Parker.
Here.
Nancy Sherlock.
Here.
Justin Bowers.
Here.
Bob Paul.
Here.
And Mayor Rebel.
Here.
Okay. So nominations for Council President are in order at this time. May I please have a nomination for Council President?
I'd like to nominate Ted Parker.
Thank you. May I, another nomination for Council President? Is there another nomination? And third time, is there any other nominations at this time for Council President? Okay, how about a roll call for Council President? Again, I'm just gonna go down the dais. Ms. Dreisbach.
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock.
Yes.
Justin Bowers.
Yes.
Bob Paul.
Yes.
Uh, Scott Robinson.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. At this time, I guess I'll go through the first appointments and then I'll turn it over to our President. We are at a time for a nomination for Council Vice President. May I have a nomination, please?
I'd like to nominate Bob Paul.
Okay, Bob Paul. Are there any nominations at this time?
I'd like to nominate Mike Jaeger.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations at this time? One more time, any nominations for Council Vice President? Okay, we have two names, two nominations, so we'll, we'll go down the dais and please let me know which candidate you would like, and we'll start again to my left. Ms. Dreisbach.
Mike Jaeger.
Thank you. Mr. Jaeger.
Jaeger.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
Bob Paul.
Thank you. Nancy.
Bob Paul.
Justin.
Mike Jaeger.
Thank you. Mr. Parker.
Bob Paul.
Thank you. Nancy.
Bob Paul.
Justin.
Mike Jaeger.
Thank you. Bob.
Bob Paul.
Okay. And Mr. Robinson.
Bob Paul.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to go the same way as before. Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Jaeger? Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So congratulations. Next is the appointment of Assistant Secretary.
I nominate Virginia Cyfers.
We have one nomination. Do we have another? Any other nominations? One last time? Okay. I'll have a, we'll do a roll call vote and we'll start with Ms. Dreisbach.
Virginia Cyfers.
Ms. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Virginia.
Mr. Bauer?
Virginia.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me as well. Next is a motion to appoint a treasurer. Can I have a nomination?
I nominate Micah Heights.
We have a nomination. Do we have another? Any other nomination? One last time? We're going to do a roll call. Ms. Dreisbach?
Micah Heights.
Ms. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes, Micah.
Mr. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's 7-0. Call for a motion to appoint a borough solicitor. We have a nomination.
I'd like, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to nominate the Brandy Flagler Associates.
Do you have a nomination? Do we have another? You have a nomination? Do we have another? One last time? Are we going to do a roll call? Ms. Dreisbach?
Gilmore Associates.
Ms. Jaeger?
Yes, Flagler.
Ms. Sherlock?
Flagler.
Mr. Bauer?
Flagler.
Mr. Paul?
Flagler.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so congratulations.
They hear the seat?
Next is 5F, which is a call for a motion to appoint the borough engineer. Do I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Gilmore and Associates.
We have a nomination. Do we have another? You have a nomination. Do we have another? One last time? Are we going to do a roll call? Ms. Dreisbach?
Gilmore and Associates.
Ms. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Gilmore, Gilmore and Associates.
Mr. Bauer?
Gilmore.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Gilmore and Associates for me, so that's 7-0. Congratulations to Gilmore and Associates. Next is 5G, a call for a motion to appoint the borough building inspector, zoning officer, fire marshal, and code enforcement officer. Do I have a nomination?
Keystone Municipal Service.
I have a nomination. Do I have another? I have a nomination. Do I have another? One last time? Roll call. Ms. Dreisbach?
Gilmore, Keystone Municipal Service.
Ms. Jaeger?
Yes, Keystone.
Ms. Sherlock?
Keystone.
Mr. Bauer?
Keystone.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
And I'm a yes, so that's 6-0. That concludes the appointment. 5D? Oh, yeah. It's not an appointment. Oh, I missed 5D. All right. So 5D is going to have to be, everything's going to have to move up and the 5D is going to move down to 5L, which would become a call for a motion to obtain bonds for the borough officials.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Carrie, 7-0. Yeah, I totally messed this up. I have to apologize. I've totally messed up the order and I passed over another one, which was supposed to be 5H, which is a call for a motion to authorize the borough manager to solicit proposals for professional services, but I think we have a problem with that.
So moved.
Second.
Wait. Just say that you should specify what professional services.
Have to do a separate one for each one or should we just make a joint? Okay.
Specify what.
All right. So then the motion would become a motion to authorize the borough manager to solicit proposals for professional services of solicitor, engineer, and code enforcement. Have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're under, which five, I'm not sure what. New business. And I believe the borough manager has something.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. If you don't mind, while we're assembled tonight, we would like to ask council to go ahead and authorize check signers. And in the past, we've designated two council members, usually the president and vice president, but it's up to council, depending on people's availability, if we were to need them, if our three in-house signers weren't available. So basically, I would ask if you'd be willing to entertain a motion to appoint the borough manager slash secretary, assistant secretary, and treasurer to continue as check signers and then to designate two council members to also serve as check signers.
Make a motion? You want a motion? Make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
Okay. Make a motion.
Change your call for a second.
Have a second?
Second.
You got to include the names.
Yeah, you have to pick the two council members.
I have to. Council needs to discuss it.
Could I suggest it be the president and vice president for now? I mean, if that becomes problem, some problem.
We just need two people to sign checks on council, correct? That are going to be here in the borough?
Yes.
Okay. Bob, you're always in town, so I nominate Bob. Can I nominate two? Somebody else that's always in town want to do it? Nancy?
You don't have to do a formal nomination. You can just say.
Shouldn't take long.
It's not a nomination. It's just where, the motion wouldn't just have those two names in it.
Yeah.
All right. Motion for Nancy and Bob to sign checks.
Well, may I add something before you, on the discussion part of this? In the past, typically it is your president and vice president, but like you heard, it doesn't need to be. Also, the borough can do a stamp. I could recall back when I was president, if there was a time that I was unavailable and they needed, they would contact me. I would authorize them to take the stamp, to put my name on the paycheck. So you don't really have to be here. Don't let that be your guiding decision. Thank you.
Is Ted not available to sign?
It's just my, I just, I would be worried that my job might keep me from something that was an emergency or something like that. Middle of the morning or something like that. If something came up, then.
It's not a real glorious responsibility. I hate to tell you.
There's two there.
Might be once a year.
And usually it's not like, we need you to come in now. It's like, could you stop in tomorrow or the next day kind of thing?
Okay. Yeah, so. Then I'll make it the president and vice president.
Okay.
So that will amend the motion. Is that okay with you, Mr. President?
And who seconded it? Everybody's nodding.
Okay. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's Ted.
7-0. Does anybody else have any new business?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the borough manager's contract through December 31st, 2021.
We have a motion to extend the borough manager's contract through 1231, 21. Any discussion on that? Do know it's an employment agreement. It's not a contract. The borough manager is an at-will employee of council, so it's not like we're locked into retaining him. No discussion then? I guess we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
No.
Mr. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
I'm going to vote no. I would rather go over the contract again before I, so.
Do an RFP.
Yeah, well.
That's not an RFP.
That's not an RFP, but.
The chief of police doesn't even have a contract.
It didn't pass anyway. All right. Any other new business?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion directing the borough manager to start the rehire recall procedure for police officer Gary Zimbano, whose employment was terminated for financial reasons.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Where's the money going to come from?
Guessing at this time, we'll figure it out later.
Where are you going to take the money from? Right now, we're paying an officer that's not working.
Roll call vote, please. Ms. Dreisbach?
No.
Ms. Jaeger?
No.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Bauer?
No.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so.
Your mic's not on.
Your button up.
Oh, it was. I thought I had it. Sorry about that. Just council action is in order to formally accept the resignation of Corinne Chronicle, who, as we all know, is now a magisterial judge and has sworn in three of the members tonight. She had her letter of resignation sent to, I don't know if you can read it in. Yeah, I can read it into the record. Sent to Scott Mitchell and the council members and the mayor CC'd. Scott, please accept this email as my formal resignation from Morrisville Borough Council along with the Civil Service Commission effective 5:00 PM on Sunday, January 5th, 2020. It's been my honor to be a First Ward Councilwoman for the past six years, and this was a difficult decision, but I look forward to serving Morrisville in a more full-time capacity as a district judge. Please reach out if anyone needs anything from the district court. And Virginia, please be sure that a copy of this email is provided to the council. Thank you, Corinne Chronicle. So action is in order just to formally accept the letter of resignation.
In the form of a motion? You're asking for it in form of a motion?
Please.
I'll make that motion.
You can do a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, just like, may I make a comment? Mr. Parker, just like to say thank you to Corinne for the years that she did serve here, and I'm sure she's looking forward to her new position, and we wish her much luck.
Scott, can we put something out there, asking anyone that's interested to send in letters of interest?
Yeah, that would naturally be the next step. We'll publicize it on our internal platforms.
Okay.
Seeking a replacement.
All right, thank you.
And I'd like to thank her for her time on council, and we worked very closely together on a couple of the committees, and I'm going to miss her up here. Do we have any other new business?
I have a question, Mr. Flagler. Do we need to take action on that letter we received about the opioid agreement? Don't we need to accept or reject their letter?
Yeah, technically, in the absence of, they, National Council had reached out to us asking for a response on a proposed restructuring plan for bankruptcy for one of the drug-making entities. Not a huge part of this, and it was the recommendation of National Council to accept the bankruptcy plan. That will be the default decision if no decision is made, as that was the recommendation of council. So if you are okay with that, you could simply do nothing or could formally vote on it, or if you don't want it, you could tell us you don't want it approved. But you don't technically need to take any action if you are okay with the bankruptcy plan going forward.
In fact, I think it was the Solicitor's Office's recommendation that we, it is it
Any other new business? I think I have one. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the law firm of Curtain &amp; Hefner LLC as the Morrisville Borough Zoning Hearing Board Solicitor. Do I have a second?
Second.
For the zoning hearing?
We have to appoint.
Oh.
CHB Solicitor.
Yeah, okay.
Roll call or voice?
You can do a roll call, that's fine.
Ms. Dreisbach?
Yes.
Ms. Jaeger? Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, and it passes 7-0. There's nothing else?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sienna Belvoir as special counsel, so they can continue their work.
Mr. Parker, I have a question for the solicitor. Any, any suit that's open right now, handled by other, either solicitor or engineer, any of those projects, I think they should remain with the current, the current solicitor or engineer, because it's our, it's an open project or an open suit, but I'd like to know how we would handle them staying on with open business, but I don't believe that they would be the permanent person in that, in that position.
What, so what specifically?
I know there's some.
How would that work, you're asking?
I'm asking how that, how that would work. So do we have to make a motion just that they continue their work? I don't have all the details on, you know, the, with our police and so forth. I don't have all those details, but.
Adam, if you're not familiar, I believe the firm that Councilman Bowers is referring to is labor council for the police department.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it, it can be done, but I guess it, a couple of issues that would arise depending on how you would do it and if you're definitely switching as far as you technically have to appoint them, you could, you could appoint them for that specific purpose and then other matters could appoint. I guess to be clear, have, have an appointment to continue in that role on a specific project and then for any other matters in that same domain, but new matters that would arise, you could appoint someone new.
So the motion would name that company or name that firm to continue its work that we currently have that's open? I mean, I don't know that.
As it stands, if, if they're, if they're already handling something that would continue unless they are told to discontinue that, you know, by a vote of the council.
Is that how you want it worded for the motion? I'm just curious.
Well, if you, if you don't have someone to be, to, if you have some, if you don't have anyone to replace him at present.
Okay.
Then you wouldn't really need to do anything until you did.
My recommendation is going to be to withdraw your motion, let the new council members get up to speed and even know who they are and what they're doing, and then we can always re-present it at the meeting in January, at the end of the month.
Yeah, as the solicitor stated, their work for us would continue.
Right.
Unless or until council directs otherwise, so.
Okay. I just, I wouldn't be in favor of stopping them in the middle of what they're doing.
Correct, but they'll, they'll continue that as, as the default.
Okay, I'll remove my motion.
So that motion's removed. Does anybody else have any new business?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Since we authorized the borough manager to solicit proposals for solicitors, should we also ask for labor council and/or conflict council?
For solicitors, so I guess we can, we should be getting a pool of, hopefully a pool of other firms and we can go from there, and if it's not clear enough, I guess we can add it to the agenda at the agenda meeting and again, you know, address it then.
Yeah, actually, if I may interrupt, I don't want to overstep the solicitor, but I believe the same situation would apply to conflict council, because you do actually have a case being handled by conflict council right now, and that work, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, would continue as is uninterrupted unless or until council decides differently.
Right, I'm just saying, we didn't specifically tell you to go solicit proposals for conflict council and special labor council.
Right.
So if, I guess we just add consensus to, to add those to it.
I'd like to, I don't know that we have to add them at this time. I think we can.
What I think Mr. Bowers is just asking for is that we solicit a broader scope of practice for solicitors and attorneys.
Solicitor proposals, and when they come in, we can decide whether you want them
You know, I mean, he can, he can make that motion if, since there are, just with engineer, just like with engineers, with, with solicitors as well, there can be different ones, and I guess Councilman Bowers is asking for some clarity as to whether it's just for the one position or is it for all of the different legal positions for the, for the borough?
If I may, Mr. President, hopefully you're correct that you do get a nice selection to pick from. I think once the council reviews, at that point, they could kind of decide which firm would be a better fit for which position. So, I mean, keep that in mind as these people apply, and I imagine you'll probably do some type of interview possibly. At that point, you can decide if you want them for your regular solicitor or conflict, et cetera.
Don't need a motion. All right. I think the borough manager.
Did you actually make a motion?
Oh, okay.
Are you comfortable with?
Okay. Is that it? Any other new, any other new business? All right, six, public comment. Do we have any names? Yes. First up is John Pastore. Please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes on the time you
John Pastore, 25 Dieter Avenue, First Ward. I'd like to congratulate everybody and welcome everybody back. Happy New Year. I'm glad we're looking into hiring a police officer back. That was my big concern. Ms. Dreisbach, where are we going to get the money from? If this council will work with the chief and, and the manager and, and look at the fine revenues that are offset his salary, it, it's not a money generating motor carrier, but it would be a lot cheaper to have him there, and it's a deterrent for all the trucks through the First Ward. I've stated this, I've had the chief up here how many times when we, when we talked about cut the police force? Let's, let's bring an officer back, let's put him back in a truck to, to keep the trucks out of our ward. There's kids playing down there, they're constantly hitting the bridge. That, that's got to stop. I know they're state roads and we can't stop them, but we got to be able to deter them.
Any officer can stop them.
No, we can't stop them.
They can inspect their truck, but they can't stop them if they see something wrong. And if they go on, flip under the bridge, they can take care of it.
They can't, we, we do not have an officer that can inspect heavy trucks. We have one. Every municipality has one. That's FMSCA. Ours is riding around in a car. We're paying all this money for him to ride around in a car.
All right, finish.
And also, that revenue's down. I, I think that they, this council's got to work with the chief. I'd like to see the chief's report back up here during the meeting. And with the parks, we spent a lot of time and got a lot of grant monies. I, I'd like this council to continue to build those parks. Debbie and Danielle and, and Scott, they, they did a lot of work to get these grants, and I don't want to see that park go by the wayside. I'm really not for it, but it, it's a good thing for our community. I don't want to see that property blighted and, and, and go to hell. You know, we, we should continue that. There's a lot of, lot of grants, we can still get to do that. I'm trying to think of what else. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Annie Millione. I butchered your name, I apologize.
Annie Millionis, 142 West Hendrickson Avenue, Morrisville. Just wanted to say Happy New Year and congratulations to those of you who have been newly elected. I would like to ask tonight, in this beginning of this new year, in the 2020s, that we go forward in a new and productive way. I really ask all of you to remember that you represent the people of this town, and though we may not always agree on everything, I want you all to work together to compromise, to come up with a well-thought-out, and if compromise is needed, then compromise to make good, sound decisions for this town. And as I said, we're not always going to agree on everything, but working together, we can achieve anything, and that's what I want to see. This town is too small to play politics, and I'll work with anyone, and I have worked with anyone. I don't care what political party you're from. If it's something that's going to be progressive and good for Morrisville, I'm there, and that's how I want us all to go forward. I've watched the politics in this town for a number of years, and it's gone back and forth along party lines, and that needs to stop. And the, I can think of no better time than the 2020s, the beginning of the 2020s, to do that. This town has so much potential. We have heard this over and over and over again, and this has got to be the time when we take that. And this has got to be the time when we take that potential to the next step, to the next level, and no longer make it just potential, but make it reality. And I'm asking you all to work together to do that and to encourage the other people in town who are doing things to do the same. And hear out people, even though they may be of different mindsets, and let's try and be accepting and understanding and really communicate effectively with one another. That's what I'm asking of you, and I hope that all of the residents in town believe in that same thing, and I think if we do that, there's no stopping this town. We have to really talk to one another, not on Facebook, face-to-face, shaking one another's hands, because we are all neighbors, and that's what it comes down to. We are all part of this town, whether you have lived here for... Your family's lived here for generations, or whether you are here for just one year. We all must work together, and that's what I'm asking you to do. Represent the people of this town, represent our best interests, and listen to us, and listen to one another, and work together. Thank you very much.
Anybody else signed up for public comment? So this time, we're going to open it up to 7, which is discussion by public officials. Anybody have anything to add? I just want to say one thing. I want to echo what was just said. We lost a very good man today, and that was Congressman... I almost did it. Congressman Fitzpatrick, who was voted numerous times as the most bipartisan congressman in Congress, and one of the most bipartisan, and actually, his brother has the same distinction. And I actually worked with him on the Patriots Park project from its beginning, and we could learn a little bit from him, so that's all I have. So a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And we're adjourned.
Vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.